Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening. We have nothing to report, our closed session. So we're going to start with the prime for the leaders. Who is going to be my lead? It's going to be Conrad. How old are you? Conrad. I see, I see. There's a whole, there's a whole other story becoming, you guys don't know. Wait, now it's Conrad. Would you please lead us?
Ladies, one, two, three.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to begin our annual organization meeting until media approval. Begin, may I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Humeck. A second by Mr. Trunkie. All those in favor said aye. Passes with a five to zero vote. Approve the agenda for tonight, December 8th, 2015. May I have a motion? Motion by Dr. Powell. Second by Mr. De La Serta. All those in favor say aye. Passes with a five to zero vote. Now, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meetings of the governing board for November 17th, 2015.
I will make a motion to approve those with corrections that have already been noted and stated correct.
I will leave corrections, but, but yes. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Trunkie. Okay, I have been giving, given these corrections to read from one of our parents who addressed the meeting last week on May 17th. Mrs. Olson stated that I have yet to find evidence of success with any similar approach. And the second vote was she also stated I have addressed my concerns with Dr. Hamlin on many occasions. If the maker of the motion, Mrs. Humeck and Mr. Trunkie agree, we will add these to the minutes. Yes, Q, all of the in favor say aye. Passes with a five to zero vote. All right, now it's approved, the minutes for the special meeting of the governing board for December 1st, 2015. May I have a motion? A motion by Mr. De La Serta. Second by Dr. Powell. All those in favor say aye. Passes with a five to zero vote. And I turn it over to you.
I'm ready. It's recognition for Board President Rose Kishelney. I want to say thank you, Rose, for being our Board President this year and working so hard to make sure that we had all of the information that we need to have and asking the good questions to make sure that we provide additional information. As a token of our appreciation, we would like to present you with a very special gavel, one that you certainly won't want to actually bang. So this is in appreciation as president of the Board of Trustees 2015 and that's sobbing through the middle of this. So, for you, thank you so much for this service.
Thank you for everything. And thank you for all of my board members and all I can say is you're a very trusting group to give me something that is glass. We will see.
That's right.
Oh, that could do some damage. Oh, thank you, that's beautiful. All right, now we're on to the election of the President of the Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion?
I have motion that you'd like, you know, make it for Board President, where the next term would be fiscal year 2015-16.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Trunkie. All in favor say aye. Passes with a five to zero vote.
We didn't give her a chance to accept, but.
We're not giving her any chances to say no. And I will, Powell here.
And now entertain a motion for nomination for clerk of the board, please.
I move to nominate Dr. Powell.
Second.
Second by Mr. De La Serta. Any last words? At least I asked him. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes with a five to zero vote. You're welcome. Selection of the members of Board of Trustees as its representative, who shall have one vote in electing members to the County Committee on School District Organization.
Clarification again on this, on this, previously held this post. Can you, can you remind us, Dr. Lucid, or any of the board members trying to recall?
It is a member of Representatives from the County District Organization. An example I can give to you is Mrs. Solomon sits on that committee and you know part of the review is of maps and looking at areas where school districts desire to reorganize their families.
Is there anyone with a light?
That's okay.
This is not for someone who served.
This one has a representative in control. To electing the members. So, did anybody have to have that?
So, that motion that I have.
You'd like to move Mr. Trunkie?
Yes.
Okay. With the motion by Mrs. Kishelney and a second by Mr. De La Serta. Any last words?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes with a five to zero vote. Selection of a member of the Board of Trustees as its representative to the Special Education Local Plan Area, otherwise known as SALPA, or the ASAN Committee.
That's something I need to know. Yeah, do I continue? I'll nominate Mrs. Humeck for, for this position. Let her show us out. And that's based on continuing your service in this, in this area as well. Consistency is really important.
I have a motion, Mr. De La Serta. Second by Dr. Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes with a five to zero vote.
Item Q is selection of a member of the Board of Trustees as its representative to the Los Angeles County School Trustees Association, otherwise known as LASTA. Any other previous questions on this?
I'm currently representing, correct.
Yeah, I have a motion.
I'd be happy to, facility wise, I work close to Boroc where most of the meetings are, 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 and that's based on us, which, which is when I'm asked to or need to attend those meetings. I'm happy to represent, if I'm other university.
So I have a motion, but it's Kishelney, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Trunkie. So, for the nomination of Mr. De La Serta. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Andrew's not out, but not even a second. Motion passes with a five to zero vote. Now onto selecting two board members, one to serve as an alternate, to serve as a member of the governing board of the Saugus Hart School Facilities Financing Authority. Do we want to help out for the member first in the audience?
Yeah, I've been doing it.
So, what I'm moving here.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Trunkie.
And do I have a second choice?
Second.
Second by Mr. De La Serta. Do you want to treat her as, as one vote then?
Yes.
We're all, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes with a five to zero vote. Now for an alternate?
I'll nominate Powell.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Trunkie. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes with a five to zero vote. Item T is to approve Resolution 2015-16. I'm sorry, I wrote all over it. Okay, how about an approval for the calendar of board meetings for 2016? By Dr. Powell. Second by Mrs. Kishelney. Did everybody take a look at the draft for vacations and such?
Yes.
What's a vacation? I know Mr. Trunkie and I ran into, which I'll still probably be out that first Tuesday of August again. If somebody else finds out they are as well, then we have, we have to notify our family members.
And any point in time, so long as your company takes out.
So.
I will likely be gone until July 19th as well.
If we can turn in our vacation dates to PM, we will share them with Dr. Lucid. Any kind of times we already know about, we'll go ahead and do an approval for this one, or make the adjustments as we see.
And then we'll just bring it back as it comes back.
So right now I have the motion by Dr. Powell and a second by Mrs. Kishelney to approve the calendar as is set. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes with a five to zero vote. Now onto item T to approve Resolution 2015-16 number 30 for certification of signatures for Division of School Financial Services for orders of salary or commercial payments, notices of employment, contracts, and related documents. Led by Dr. Powell. Second. Second by Mrs. Kishelney. Dr. Lucid, are you commenting?
Just getting, this is annual certification certificate.
And this is a little called up, Dr. Powell.
Mr. De La Serta?
Aye.
Mr. Trunkie?
Aye.
Mrs. Humeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Kishelney?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Resolution passes with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Item U is to approve Resolution 2016-16 number 31 for certification of signatures for Division of School Financial Services Authorizing Special Education Local Plan Area Director to Sign SALPA Related Documents. May I have a motion, please?
So.
I have a motion by Mr. Trunkie and a second by Mrs. Kishelney. Also, this is routine, Dr. Powell is able to call it.
Mr. De La Serta?
Aye.
Mr. Trunkie?
Aye.
Mrs. Humeck?
Aye.
Mrs. Kishelney?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Resolution passes with a vote of five to zero.
Onto our hearing session. Recognition this evening and we'll turn this over to Dr. Lucid.
I have SALPA, Mrs. Lori Norman. And, uh. Why don't we have, why don't we have Mrs. Norman right over here? And.
I will be more than happy to say goodbye.
I'll let you speak.
I remember those days with the Girl Scouts and the guide knives. Mrs. Norman, I know you're off to bigger and better things with that new brand name, but we want to just tell you how much we appreciate the many, many years you have devoted to us. And please find a special place to put this recognition. And please, Eddie? All guests. Right, my Tim Glocksby, Eddie?
I'm going to show him my dear.
Thank you so much. I'd like to invite Mr. Conrad Abado to come front and center, please, Conrad. Always with a smile. Conrad, you were one of the first people I ever met when I came on the board in 1995. We, yes, we had, in the old days, before computers, where they used to take the, the agenda and sort of chisel it on tablets, Mr. Abado would come to my house every Friday night and bring a packet. We started a game, I had a group of people, we did a jitter club at my house, you know, we'd go places and we'd always come home. And then some of them would come outside the door and say, gee, what is this blue packet doing here? We don't understand. So I had to tell them all about the blue packet. Then we started a game. Where's Conrad? If anybody could hear him come up to the door and leave the packet.
Oh, we did it.
We would run out the door and say, we found him, we found him. You know, this man is so quiet. I tell you, in a past life, he must have been something, you know, in the military because he just moved.
Someone dropped a gun.
Anyway, we thank you for your many, many years. How many years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. We're going to miss you. Thank you very much for being so wonderful to us and always being available and we're going to give you this certificate. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Well, this is what we knew when he came because I have big dogs. My dogs always used to greet Conrad at the front door.
First, I'd like to congratulate again Lori and Conrad. Thank you very much for, for your service and, and commitment to our, our children and to the district. All the hours of service you do behind the scenes as well, you know, how committed you've been. We will miss you dearly and we hope you come back and visit us whenever you like, especially on those times when we have food and celebration. I'd like to congratulate and, but first thank Mrs. Kishelney for your presence as School Board President and your service in this capacity. How many school board presidencies have you had? Five, five years of serving as School Board President?
And a half, I guess.
Well, we thank you and, and I appreciate, I appreciate the time that a School Board President certainly puts in. And people may not, may not know this, if you're new to the attending a meeting, is that the hours spent in, in working with the superintendent in preparing our agenda, doing special, you know, meetings and phone calls and information, always the first person to communicate to in regards to emergencies and in many other situations that call for the Board President to be on call at all times. So thank you, Rose, for your service. Congratulations to Mrs. Humeck. We look forward to your, your Board Presidency this year. We have a lot to look forward to. We have a lot to implement and, and this is your fourth? Fifth?
I did it two years.
You did two years, oh, that's right. So, congratulations. Congratulations to Dr. Powell for serving us as clerk and we appreciate the time for you to roll call. And all the various signatures that's required by the clerk, which is a lot. There's a lot of documents that clerk must, must sign, so yeah, start, start your hand exercises now for, for, for having to sign all of our various documents. I just want to wish everybody a very happy holiday. Welcome to the last one with Mr. Brown. Congratulations on your new position. We look forward to working with you and thank you for coming today. And I already see, are already taking photos and snapshots, which is great. So congratulations on your new post. Lastly, happy holidays to, to everyone. This is our last meeting, obviously, before, before going to the new year as well. This has been a, a great year for us to, you know, reflect back on all the new and exciting things that we've been working on. We appreciate, first, I want to say thank you for our Teachers Association, for your hard tireless work in the classroom, keeping our, our students safe. And we know that a lot of are sick right now and I could hear, there's a lot of germs out there. So, good luck in closing out the, the year, keeping our kids healthy and getting them ready for, for, for vacation. Also, of course, to our classified staff and our district staff as well, thank you for all of our work being done this year. We're looking for a very positive 2016. You know, we, we still have to be very diligent. I think that we know that economically, we still have yet to see what other things are on the horizon that the governor has prepared for us in regards to revise, in regards to adaption to some of the challenges that exist in, in the economy. And so we do appreciate certainly to, that we've gone through a tough cycle together, but let's be diligent that, that we have to still be aware that it'll come back. And, and so I think as we look at using our finances wisely and commit to another year of, of being fiscal prudent, as I know that we as a board feel really confident in regards to having, and looking forward to having a full cabinet next year as well. That's a good thing and we appreciate the cabinet for you, keeping things going afloat without a CBO. Thank you, Dr. Lucid, thank you, Dr. Hamlin, thank you, Dr. Stevenson, thank you, Mrs. Dolm, for your hard work as well this year, we appreciate it. We look forward to celebrating at Dr. Lucid's house and again, happy holidays and happy
A lot of what I'm going to say is just going to pair with what Paul just said. Welcome, Lee, congratulations, Conrad, congratulations, Lori. We wish you the best in your retirement. And I want to say thank you, Rose, for this last year as Board President. I have a great deal of respect for you and your long and distinguished years of service to this board. And happy holidays to everybody. I look forward to a really great year. I think that this past year we have had to focus on a lot of things that have kept us from really focusing on the things that we should be, turn our kids in the classroom and providing everything that they need to succeed. And we've got a lot of great things in store for the school district with Measure EE and a lot of new technology that's coming very soon and it'll be great to be able to spend a lot of our time focusing on that. That's it. Thank you. So good evening, everyone, and congratulations, Lori and Conrad, I'm hearing that as we go down the panel tonight, but best wishes on a wonderful retirement. I would also like to say thank you to Mrs. Kishelney, thank you for your leadership as President of the Board. Thank you, Mrs. Humeck, for your service as clerk and showing me how to be a clerk, so I can fill your shoes as best as I can. I do want to report, we went to the CSBA conference over the last weekend and so attended some very good panels there, some interesting information about the state budget and state politics and so bringing some of that good information back to bear on my job as a, as a member of this Board of Trustees. Also, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Hamlin for inviting me to attend the workshop yesterday, the EBI workshop, and for taking the time to sit with me for two and a half hours and providing with the context that I needed for understanding that apparently I've been doing looping and layered activities in my classroom for years and I didn't even know it, so, well, thank you.
At the end of the year, as Mr. De La Serta said, it's always a great time for us to express our gratitude. So without belaboring it, I want to thank each and every one of you out here from the bottom of my heart, looking at all of you, the time, the energy that we've put in this year, the extra time and energy everyone has put in this year. Going to CSBA once again is an affirmation that we are a district, even though we have shortcomings, we are in a good place. We are on the right track, even at times that we fall short. We still, we're so willing to put strategies into place. I have to tell you, we, we attended workshops together. The very first one was so appropriate, I walked in eight in the morning and it was, went on trust. And as I sat there, I thought, wow, this isn't just about trust amongst everybody here at this day, is those of you in the audience? But it talked about trust in our families, in our relationships, and about how it affects, because it affects the classroom and the parent community, how it actually affects student achievement. So one of the goals we looked at as we all chatted this weekend and it gave us a really good opportunity. We had casual conversations, we had difficult conversations, and it's the one time that we legally can do this without violating the Brown Act. It is a wonderful time for all of us and it's everybody up here, we just, we had some really, really robust conversation. Some of the things is what we looked at, I personally am looking at goals as a board member, as part of this team, is, is to move us forward. We all have things that if we look back, we would like to change, we would alter, but it's time to move forward, it's time to get clarification. We, we had a lot of great discussions about communication and I have to tell you, I appreciate everybody up here that talked about communication and what we needed to do, looking at our transparency, but also things like looking at mutual respect, having respect for our teachers, our administrators, our people in the district office, and our children, our parents, all the way around. Those are really crucial. And I promise, Mr. De La Serta, I didn't get religious, but had a service today where I work, I know, and it wasn't about religion. What it was about though, for me and for what I observe, it is our, what's referred to as the Year of Mercy. More important, what it means to anybody on this planet right now is a year of forgiveness. In other words, to look back, say, okay, we get it. In other words, to look back, say, okay, we get it, we did it, we didn't do it, we didn't listen enough, we listened too much, we didn't talk enough, or we talked too much, or without a filter, or concerns, but you know what? We really need to look at things and I need to forgive my shortcomings. And I think we need to look at other people's. I think what we need to look at is our intent. I think we're all here for the same reason, and that's for our kids. And I think every time we look at each other and if we disagree on something, we need to think, why are you here? Why am I here? Why are we here? Everybody's sitting here, you're all here about the kids. You know, you don't stand till two in the morning reading things, you're not learning new strategies for any reason, and you're not even doing the books and looking at facilities, looking at technology. It's because of our kids. And if we keep looking at that with our kids in everything we do, and, and we look at our shortcomings and say, okay, where can we find the commonality? I have to tell you, we kept hearing, not just our district, the issues are not just our teachers' issues, we heard things that we've heard from our teachers and our classified and our administrators up and down the state of California. Everything we went to, we kept hearing it over and over again. You know what? Saugus has always been at the forefront. We walk away saying, gosh, we're really a great district here. We had other peoples come up and say, oh, you're from Saugus, you've already tried this, you've done this, you've done that. I would, I humbly ask all of you that we keep doing it, even when we get tired, even when we get frustrated. We want to commit to all of you that we will do our darkest to be moving things forward this year. So, I want to be there with us. And once again, I just want to thank each and every one of you. Okay. Mrs. Kisheli, I'm sorry.
No, I'm the first. Oh, why? Why? This is my 21st year of service to this district. And the same thing that I noticed in 1995 is the same thing I notice today, and that is the number of people who work so hard for our children. Thank you for everything you do. This week, I have really been out of it. I get to be a mother-in-law come Saturday, and I thank every one of you guys because I just am going to be hearing about three or four more Saugus employees as my relatives. So, I think it's really neat. Okay, but, but I did get to do a couple of things. One thing that I did a couple of weeks ago was the PTA council dinner at North Park, and all the moms and dads were there that, they just worked tirelessly for all our schools. And then, on Friday, I got to go to the Highlands Carnival. And I took my grandson to the carnival because Mr. Martinson had put up three or four tons of snow on the ground. So, my grandson said, gotta have a ticket for that, so, bought a ticket, went down the ramp a couple of times, severely loved it. And I loved, all the parents there did for the kids that night. It's just wonderful. We were all cold and we all went home and had hot chocolate. And tomorrow, I will, along with a few of my board members and Dr. Lucid, we will be attending the annual brunch at Robertson Ranch for the PTA. They have that twice a year because the area is so large. At one time, it's in like Amal Valley, and the other end of the year, it's in, in somewhere in Saugus. And so, we're going to go to brunch tomorrow at Robertson Ranch. So, it should be nice and to thank all the people that work so hard for our kids.
Okay, so, the first thing I want to do is make an announcement. We have our public information officer here, Mr. Lee Morrell. So, congratulations, Lee, and welcome. We are very, very happy that you are here. So, thank you very much. I'd also like to say congratulations to Lori and Conrad. It's been wonderful working with both of you for the last five months. And thank you, Rose, and congratulations, Judy and Dave. And finally, just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and I hope you all have a wonderful winter break.
I'd also like to welcome Lee, welcome aboard, we're happy to have you, and to Conrad and Lori. Thank you so much for all of your service over many years and the constancy of your excellence. We all appreciate that. And to Rose, thank you for your service as board president and so many years on the board. And to Judy, here's to a new year and your leadership of us. And Dave, to you also, congratulations on your position on our board here. In terms of the life of our schools, this is the month that we have our benchmarks. And I'd like to take a moment to thank our curriculum council for all of the time that they invested in working through the logistics and the choice of tools for the benchmarks. This week, we also had, or last week, we also had two trainings by our PE TOSA, getting our fifth grade teachers reappointed with the standards for PE as well as the testing protocols that they need to use. I received news last week that the Saugus Hearing Committee for the library is reconvening tomorrow night, and they're going to give us an update on some of the options for the library. So, I will report back to you as soon as we have that. Dr. Powell, thank you for your time and attention. On Monday, we appreciate you having to join us. And then, to everyone who is connected to Saugus, I hope that your holidays are long and restful and are ready to go again. Thank you.
Again, congratulations to Conrad and to Lori. Thank you for your long years of service and your smiles and all that you've done to move forward our groups. Thank you so very much. Thank you to Lee Morrell, who is now going to be taking over Facebook. Has already told me that Instagram is on its way, and I'm very happy. And when board, you see us next at a board meeting on the 19th, for a board meeting, you'll have a full cabinet. I'll be very happy about that. Congratulations to Rose. Thank you for all your years of service. It's been delightful to work with you this year, as well as thank you, Judy, for words of wisdom as we do look at moving forward. And certainly, Dave, you had a great mentor in being clerk, so I know that, that if you have issues, please help us. And I have a statement I'd like to read this evening, and just wanting to create an environment in which we can continue to build and to move forward. I want to take this opportunity to clarify where we are in relation to direct instruction and future steps. To begin, I want to acknowledge each and every Saugus colleague's commitment to excellence in elementary education. It is truly evident in every class, every school and every classroom. Your care and concern for building relationships with your students sustain and support their classroom experiences. Your expertise and dedication to lifelong learning also make us the extraordinary district we are. Research certainly points out that the single most important element in accelerating student achievement is the quality of the teacher at the front of the room, and we are committed to supporting you on this educational journey. How did we get to where we are with direct instruction? Federal law identified our district as a program improvement district almost six years ago and required a research-based plan to address the needs of all students. A professional development plan was developed that would increase the effectiveness of our teaching methodologies, as well as establish a common language to ensure academic and personal success for every child. One element of that plan was the research-based methodology, direct instruction. Additionally, we addressed English learners learners with systematic ELD, Kennedy Center Arts integration, and most recently included ELA speaking and listening standards, mathematical practices, a new math program, hands-on math training, gate differentiation strategies, and previews of next-generation science standards. Among the variety of presenters, there have been representatives from Test Rise, ELACH, CSLA, LACO, AXA, and the Kennedy Center. What have been the benefits? We have a common language regarding direct instruction and an intensified understanding of the learning process. There is increased collaboration amongst teachers and greater articulation across grade levels with collaborative instructional planning time. What seem to be the issues? Surveys, interactions, and conversations identify a variety of concerns from the volume of change, single methodology focus, implementation misconceptions, to professional development. Yes, the volume of change has been extremely challenging. More state and federal accountability demands, common core, old instructional materials, a new math program, technology, a new state funding mechanism, ELD requirements, gate needs, student and parent demands, and always the desire to meet the needs of all children. So, where do we go from here? We fundamentally recognize that direct instruction is not a sole instructional methodology. It has created a foundation on which we can build, expand, and ensure even greater student achievement. A professional dialogue regarding misconceptions is needed to establish trust where there is and should be room for creative implementation of a variety of instructional methodologies to meet the needs of all children. Professional developments in the variety of instructional methodologies are required and planned for as we move forward. The implementation of next-generation science standards also will demand that the teachers use a variety of instructional strategies, particularly inquiry-based, to create meaningful hands-on learning experiences. In summary, I would like to offer, we recognize that direct instruction is one important of many instructional strategies and applaud that there is a common language in practice at all sites. We expect all teachers to use a variety of instructional strategies in addition to direct instruction. We rely on teachers to use their professional knowledge and expertise to select the most appropriate instructional strategy based on the needs of their individual classes. We look forward to building on the instructional strengths of our teachers as we focus on the next-generation science standards that will demand the use of a variety of instructional methodologies, including direct instruction. We are committed to expanding a professional dialogue that addresses misunderstandings and develops greater awareness and appreciation of research-based instructional methodologies and processes. We are asking administrators and teachers to identify what is working with direct instruction and what is not. We are also asking what they see as the issues and potential solutions. Our intent is to support the elements of direct instruction that are working and address those elements that are not working. In expanding our dialogue, the issues and suggested solutions can inform our next steps in developing an action plan, improve our communication, build trust, and ensure academic and personal success for every child. I look forward to a new year where professional conversations will honor each of our commitments to excellence in elementary education and will exemplify our core values of respect, integrity, learning teamwork, and enthusiasm. Finally, I wish you a season full of wonder, discovery, and the excitement that lifts your spirits and brings you wonderful memories with family and friends. And my quote, as I've heard from others, "The good life is inspired by love and guided by knowledge." Kristen Russell. Thank you very much.
Kristen, give the hat to Mrs. Dahl to have entered into the minutes.
I will, and I will also be sending copies to school sites.
Thank you. Oh, righty. On to Saugus Teachers Association.
Good evening, cabinet and school board members. SCA would like to wish everyone a safe, healthy, and joyful holiday season. We would like to recognize Conrad Armato, district's office custodian, and congratulate him on his retirement, which is much deserved every time I come here here.
I go back to the teacher voice, it's okay. Thank you, Rose, for your service as the trustee president, and congratulations to Judy Yumak on our new board president. Thank you, Dr. Powell, for continuing to follow up on our concerns and attending the last EPI training. Our teachers are excited to see the trustees taking an active role in hearing the perspective of the classroom teachers. Hearing, not just listening, but actually hearing it. We have another general membership meeting scheduled for the 21st of January, will be meeting at Foster Elementary School, 3:45 PM. And we hope that maybe all of you will be able to come and attend. We'd be happy to schedule it for you so you can be in compliance with Round Act. Although nothing has been removed from our already full plates, teachers are taking on an additional workload, including the new math benchmarks, writing benchmarks, PE training, student study team training, and various committee meetings. In spite of our increased responsibilities, we remain steadfast in our professionalism, fulfilling all of these duties. On behalf of our teachers, we would like to remind the board that we too are stakeholders and expect to be a part of the upcoming communication survey from the Communication Committee. Our bargaining team has shared possibilities for civility clause, and teachers are anxiously awaiting an update. We're happy to see that it's on the agenda tonight. We're looking forward to the CBO position being filled so that the board can address upcoming financial compensation. We would like to officially note again that no increase to either the salary or medical compensation has been included in our three-year budget, even though we have colleagues that are paying nearly one-fourth of their salary to the medical coverage. We are looking forward to completing the RFP process that relates to the flatboards so that we can get updated technology into all of our classrooms. And we too look forward to a new year and trust that some sort of collaboration will be established to ensure all stakeholders have a time to share their perspectives. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and the cabinet. Thank you, Rose, for your service as president, and congratulations, Judy, and our pal for being quick. Conrad, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
I'm six weeks into mine, I can't hardly tell. I am officially retired. I received my first pension payment. The amazing thing is I find myself busier than before with even less me time. On the days I'm grandma nanny, I actually find myself stuck in traffic. I used to be, I'm used to getting home like five minutes after school is out, and that doesn't happen to me now. Welcome, Lee Morrell. It's nice to have you aboard, CSBA. Good. I've been sitting on interview panels and will continue to do so when they fall on my non-grandma nanny days. When they do fall on those days, I have been locating CSBA members working in job classifications, which are interviewing, and who are able to sit. So far, it's working someplace. We will be meeting and confering with Dr. Stevenson tomorrow, and we still have a few things that we're looking at. Our chapter will be voting on our tentative agreement this month as soon as we get it back from CSBA's 6-10 process. We hope that happens soon. We will also be holding our e-board elections on the same day, and we will have a new president. I have two quotes for tonight. For remembrance, "Long, long be my heart with such memories filled, like the vase in which roses have once been distilled. You may break, you may shatter the vase if you will, but the scent of roses will hang round it still." I will always remember all my years working with the kids in Saugus District, all the way back. Started volunteering in 1986, became an employee in 1990. And then, from, that was Thomas Moore, by the way. "For my grandchildren, Zoe Carmichael Wyatt and Cameron Lee Norman, my lovely living girl and boy, my hopes, my haps, my love, my life, my choice." Fairphrased a little bit because it was only for a boy. From Goulamay Desalu State. And I am not normally politically correct, so, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Ramadan, Yom Kippur, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa. Love to you all. Thank you, gentlemen. Once again, enjoy life.
That's a tough act to follow.
Thank you. It's an honor. Good evening, members of the board, cabinet, and honor speakers tonight. Murray Mann, Transwell Palm Elementary School. Congratulations, Lori and Conrad, nobody said this, but you look so good. How am I going to look that good while I retire? To serve that long and the pressures we have, you look great. And thank you so much for everything you do and are about to do in your new life. Thank you, Rose Kisheli, for your service as president, and congratulations to Mrs. Judy Yumak to be our new president in the upcoming year, governing board. What have administrators been doing? We've been busy. We've been attending professional development. We're in a continuous improvement process. We're in a continuous improvement process. We're on our second series of professional development with Dennis Fox. It's designed to examine research-based instructional practices. And our most recent seminar focused on how we can deliver effective feedback and advice to teachers so that we can be a team and create a better learning environment for our students. We reflect on our own way that we evaluate and the things that we say so that we can be effective. We take a good look at ourselves in the mirror. We look at our strengths and we look at those places where we need to improve. We, tomorrow, will be attending the PBIS along with our teacher leaders, that's Positive Behavior Intervention Support. It's going to create a new culture on our campus with a positive way to deal with children who have challenges, either on the play yard or in classes. We also attend seminars. We went with Dr. Hamlin and several other administrators and one teacher representative to Ventura to learn about our CASP, which is the Smarter Balance Test, and it's coming up in the spring. And what we learned is that it's a comprehensive annual state platform, and it's not only an assessment, but it's designed with three components. And those three components help us improve teaching, help us improve how to guide students, and also has resources in a digital library form. So we look forward to sharing this information with all administrators and all staff. But this is my favorite time of the year because it's a holidays approach for me. It's joy. It's joy in my heart. It's a chance to hold dear what we have in our families and our friends, and we look to each other and we spend a lot of time with each other. We bring that holiday spirit every single day all around us. We share with one another the joys and the things that we're looking forward to. So even though we have holiday boutiques, and I was walking at one all Saturday, and we talk about gift exchanges and where our holiday party will be and things like that, we're preparing for celebrations and having children sing. I even got my husband to be Santa Claus at Plum Canyon this year, so don't tell anybody else. It's a surprise. When I walk through the classrooms, we're teaching. Every, every, every teacher is teaching. Yes, they're blowing snowballs on Santa's face, but before that and after that, there are lessons going on. So that's, that's something I'm really proud of as an administrator. And so Saugus administrators do take the time to guide and lead and transform instruction to reflect these changes that happen for our students in instruction each and every day. Have a great, happy holiday, Merry Christmas.
And happy everything else, too. Happy New Year. Thank you.
What does it mean from the Child Development Program? Sorry, Rose, we'll, we'll take you off the hook, too. We've invited your supervisors, tight supervisors, to come. I hope they take this opportunity. Let them a little bit. How about from parent leader organizations, night school site councils? Do we have any questions regarding the agenda items? Seeing none, or advanced written requests? Hearing none? Since we're not, we're going to just take a short break, just about five minutes, because we're going to switch some seats here. So if you need a chance to stand a little bit.
I have a small, I have a small.
My record was like, I was like, wow.
I don't think I have to be close now.
I'm seeing a letter.
Yeah, you're a good person.
My record was like, I was like, wow.
I don't think I have to be close now.
Yeah, you made me sick.
Went and drove around this state of Rogers Park.
Crossed the street to the other park, went back up, he finally, he looked, he goes, it's here, it's here, but we're still driving.
Would we show them that it's this way?
It's a fun thing.
Ask anyone about it, they can take themselves.
It's a fun thing.
Ask anyone about it, they can take themselves.
Here's some, you know, you know.
Because then, well, we, 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 we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we, we,
We've not had any correspondence.
Of, of the three?
Well, just of the one that we're concerned about. And so are you...
I would make a motion for, for Christie Smith.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chalky? Any little discussion? Here, now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passed, it's with a five to zero vote. And I would ask that we send a letter to a new home school district, letting them know that we have nominated Mrs. Smith as well. Thank you. On to business services. Approve the 2014-15 audits report. I'm watching this thing, it's a doctor, this is for the final time.
Second.
Second, by Dr. Powell and Ms. Christie.
I'd like to introduce our representative from our audit department, and she is Brian Law, and he wants to be presenting on our financials for the district. And he wants to send the T P.
Thank you. Good evening. This is our firm's second year doing audit for Saugus School District, and, uh, the first year, I think, I talked at length about our audit processes and what we do as a firm for your district, and basically how it will go through controls and audit the financials that year. And, uh, this year, I think it's important to note more of the, uh, aspects that are in the report that are significant this year, significant changes and significant, um, findings that we have that are carried forward from the prior year. The, uh, first thing I'd like to do is acknowledge Roseanne and, and her staff for their assistance in helping us with the audit process. Roseanne came in in mid-June. That's quite a challenge for somebody to come in and close the books, um, at a time where you didn't have anybody else there to help her, so other than your capable staff. But as far as an oversight and a knowledge base from anyone, you know, there was some assistance and support that we provided, um, in addition to get those books closed and make sure that your financial statement was delivered on time and accurate. So that being said, uh, with moving forward, I think what we see is that we're going to, we've already seen some corrective action plans that have been initiated with the findings that have been reported in the prior year. Typically, what we do in our second year as a, as an audit firm is usually we, we would see progress. There's a little bit of, a little bit of disrein in, in the department this year, so, um, we didn't see as much progress as we had hoped, um, but forward looking, I think that, you know, with the proactive approach that we see being taken now, that, um, there is a silver lining there, and that these issues are very capable of being corrected. So that's just from our, from our viewpoint on the internal control processes of the district that you're already aware of, that had occurred in the past, so we see some progress. Within the report itself, uh, the very significant change this year is government of counties standards board, statute number 68. It's, it's the most significant change in years to fiscal reporting for public agencies throughout the country, specifically within the state of California and school districts. It relates to PERS and STIRS employee pension plans. I heard earlier somebody got their first pension plan painted, so you'd like that to continue, right? So what Gatsby 68 addresses is the fact that the liability is huge, unfunded, in the billions of dollars. And what they're trying to recognize with this, this, uh, standard and, and reporting requirement is the impact that would have on school districts if the pension fund was, um, not able to sustain it. So you are, you've already seen increases, significant increases within the PERS and STIRS rates year after year. That's accounted for annually within your budget. The liability itself is not a specific obligation that the district is on hook for, per se. It's a pro-rata share of the total planned liability. The plan is audited by another audit firm. Actuary studies are provided by another firm that's completely separate from the district, but it does then correlate back to every member agency within the state, within the PERS and STIRS pools. So that being said, we, we take the financial statement, the actuary study, and take their pro-rata share allocations of the billions of dollars, and ultimately what that leads to is roughly a $64.5 million aggregate net pension liability for Saugus. So every school district in the state has a significant decline in what we call the government-wide financial statement. Those financial statements do not tell the story of the operating effectiveness of the district. The general fund and the other funds of the district that run the day-to-day transactional activity are still the key. Within the government-wide financial statements, you have other liabilities such as your GO bonds issued now, your COPs, um, compensated absences, and all the capital assets that are constructed within the district and will be added with the bond proceeds in the future. So what, that statement was, uh, incorporated roughly 10 years ago, and it was more to give a global perspective of what the district landscape looked like from an asset and liability standpoint, but it is completely uncomparable to any district locally or anywhere else based on size of ADA or otherwise. There's a lot of variables there. Capital assets are valued at historical cost, so you can imagine, just based on when you put those assets into place, how it could really have a discrepancy and not be comparable whatsoever. One of the points I'd like to make, like, within your, within your pension liability, is it's very similar to a general obligation bond. General obligation bonds are obligations of the taxpayer of the district, goes through property taxes, the, um, however the liability is reported on the district's books. Much like the aggregate net pension liability, it is an overall obligation of the state. So the piece is then pulled into the district's books as a share of that, but nobody funds it other than a pay-as-you-go and the expected rate that is budgeted for each fiscal year. So in addition to the significant deficiencies that we had in the prior year, we have one additional management letter comment, and it's related to self-assets, capital asset recording and, and tracking. We think it's important that those assets are maintained and that a, a system be put in place to track those capital assets on an ongoing basis. So I can get specific to Gatsby 68, or we can go anywhere you want with it, but if, and we can refer to pages in the financial, but it could take quite some time if we really get detailed, and that there's a lot of additional note disclosure and scheduled presentation within the report this year, so whatever your pleasure is, I can answer those questions.
I'm going to assume we're going to be meeting with our new CBO when he comes on board?
At some point, sure, when we...
I hope that would be sooner than later, and that way you can discuss those deficiencies with him and Roseanne, and then they'll come up with a strategy, and I'm assuming he's going to come back to us?
What is the timeline of that?
With a plan, well, he starts the first meeting in January.
Okay.
That would be my question.
I think you understand the...
No, very good. It, it would be helpful for us too in our audit plans, so that's perfect timing.
I do think so.
Right. And that's, that will add to the progress that we hope to attain also with, within the audit too, to even be more of assistance to the district in that regard. I think the audit is an important component in helping the district as well, uh, to not only fix items, but to maintain and, and progress and, and improve.
Well, we would agree with you. We are thrilled with Roseanne and the progress she's made and the responsibilities she took on. In light of what some of our other neighboring districts have gone through, I think we are going to be looking at the audit with a different set of eyes, but we're definitely going to want our CBO to be part of that, and we're going to look forward to hearing what he's just going to be putting into place as a group. So we're going to be hearing from Sue and Amy.
What we're looking to hear from you.
Were there any deficiencies that carried over from last year to this year?
As a matter of fact, all three, uh, from the prior year. There was no, no improvement in those areas, uh, you know, and I think, I wouldn't want to say why, per se, but as we look back at it, you know, there could be many reasons why, you know.
Rosie, we just could look Denise tomorrow and get an appointment with, uh, Dr. Hayek first thing in January, so that he actually, it'll give him a lay of the land?
Yes.
Of what we've got going on, what those deficiencies are, and, you know, that you've been working with the staff to establish some parameters, and that gets everybody on board quickly, as well as will help him come up to speed with where we closed the books last year, and then where we are as we're moving through this year.
We hope the next time we see you, you're going to tell us we've rectified those deficiencies.
We hope to. We'll be looking.
And just to put it in perspective, I think you said the, the liability for Saugus is $64 million?
That's the aggregate net pension liability. There's three components, we can, I can talk about those, they're within, uh...
I'm more curious to know if you just happen to know what the, the total state liability...
The total state, it's in the billions, I don't have the number, I'm up in my head. I've seen it once, but I'm more interested in what...
It's a one-digit number or a two-digit?
It's a, uh, it's a eight-digit number. No, it's more than that, it's billions. Yeah.
I bet you can find it for us and share it with Rosie.
We could share that, yeah. We have the report, I just don't know it specifically offhand. I'm more concerned with your pro-rata amount. I should know it though, I suppose, with, you know, just the overall landscape of what it is specifically.
Yeah, it becomes an issue when trying to talk about the, the contribution rating and really the only effective way around that is for the state to swallow a pretty big pill of, of, of a good chunk of that liability.
Right. I guess you could, yeah, you could almost back in though, what the number is when you look at the percentage of your pro-rata share of the number, all you have to do is factor that, and you would find it real quickly within this schedule. So that, that's an easy way to do it.
So have more information? Here, now, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, it's to approve the audit, five to zero vote. Thank you very much. We'll be forward to chatting with you more after our CBO is here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item D is to approve the fair share, school medication, school impact medication payment adjustment analysis for the calendar year 2016. May I have a motion, please?
So.
Will play Mr. Dale Serna.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Chalney. Dr. Lucic.
You will find, uh, most of the changes are noted on the first four pages, that as you're looking at this, any of the non-land components, uh, just a, less than a percentage change, and then looking at appraised value for the next elementary school, that would be, um, as we take note in trial, for that per acre cost is significant, 1.1 million per acre. It would be 9.2 acresite, and then again, that percentage change is about 5.14 percent. And then student generation factors, uh, from single family to multi-family, uh, from into next year, and then the difference between 2015 and 2016, as we're looking at single family units, actually an increase of 2.58 percent, uh, and overall decrease of income through, is received here from the multi-families. And then finally, uh, fair share without assignment of state funds, uh, single families would be a charge out of $14,000 per unit, and, uh, the multi-family is 7, 7,400, with the assignment would be $13,000, local $13,000 in the multi-family. So just your information, this is an annual report that's required from state, and here's
Is there any revised date about when you try, is it...
I think in light of this recent, the recent ruling, um, I don't have a decision as to when that will see. And I want to thank, um, Sue Gordon, who works very well with Erica, to make sure these things all happen in the manner in which they need to happen, and if it's all posted, and supposedly, she does a decent job.
Any other questions? Here, now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed, it's five to zero vote. On to item C, to approve the first interim. May I have a motion just, by Dr. Powell? Second by Mr. Chalky.
And, um, I'm going to start by saying thank you very much to Roseanne, who has done an amazing job of putting together your first interim and bringing forth information. She's, she's setting up here, there you go, it's up, and just need to give it to the full page, and, uh...
My help for them.
Your help is amazing. So, Roseanne, take it away.
All right, so first I'd like to thank the board for giving this opportunity to present the first interim, uh, report to you for, uh, 1516. And second, I'd like to thank the fiscal department for all of their support, um, in putting together the report with all the numbers. In front of you, you should have, um, two, uh, two items, you should have the executive summary, which is the detail of the PowerPoint presentation, it was, um, posted on the agenda on the... So the first part of the presentation talks about the education code, and, um, as you're aware, we, uh, all districts have to provide a closing report with the numbers as of October 31st and for 1516, and then at the second interim, which you will see in March, for the numbers as of January 31st. I'm pleased to inform you that, uh, Saugus does have a positive certification, and we will meet all of our financial obligations for the current year and the two subsequent years. On my next slide, we're talking about the budget assumptions, the summary of them. The first budget assumption is our LCFS gap funding, and as you are aware, that's 79 percent of our funding. Um, we have increased the gap funding for 1617, 1718, to the Department of Finance numbers for 35 percent, um, for both years. But there is a note that I really would like to bring your attention to, um, per the county, they're strongly recommending within our format that if we use the, the DOF gap factors, we must have contingency, a contingency plan in place, should these funds fail to materialize. And as we go further, you'll see some reserve that we are taking into account for our contingency plan. The next item... The next item on the slide is the ADA, or the one-time funding, $529 for ADA, and again, this is one-time funding. This year, we received $5.1 million in one-time funding. We do not have it budgeted for 1617 and 1718, because there is no indication at this point that the state will be, um, sending additional funding to, to the districts. And then the rest of them are the projected enrollment, which comes from our C-Bes, which we just certified last week. Our P2 ADA projection, our unduplicated accounts dated 27%. And for those of you who remember, the unduplicated account is what funds our supplemental grant, the lottery restricted and unrestricted, our site allocation for every student at each site, each site receives $75. And those are based on the 2014-15 CalPAC number. And then we have our pension increases. And as you've seen before, from 15 to 16 to 1617, the Stirs and Flotterweight rate, 1317%. And then the next year, 15%. And for PERS, we have an increase of 10% going into 1617 and 27% going into 1718. So these assumptions are taken into account when we do the multi-year projection. As I stated earlier, and you're aware, the LCFF calculation is the main piece of our funding. So I wanted to break it down to really understand how is that calculated and where does the funding come from? So we start with our base grant, which is based on our 1415 ADA numbers. And then we have an additional amount for grade spend adjustment to reduce class size for TK through three grades. The supplemental grant, improvement grant, and transportation are all restricted funds. They go under our restricted fund account. And as you know, the supplemental grant is for unduplicated students. And as a reminder, it's the English learners, economically disadvantaged, and our foster youth. So we have a target. So the state is saying that when we're fully funded in 2020, 2021, we should receive $78 million. To, over time, so the state can afford to, for all of us to reach that target, they have set a floor. The floor takes into account what started 2013, 14. It adds the gap funding that was provided to the district each year, and then there's a COLA increase. So our floor right now for 1516 is $64 million. At the end of the day, the state has to give us at least a minimum of $64,000. When you have your difference, you have $13 million between your target and your floor. So that $13 million, the state this year said, okay, we're going to give you 51.52% of that difference. So our total LCFF funding is $71 million. And as you can see, we're pretty close to that target. So if you look at the projections going forward, over for 1516 and 1617, we're only around 2.5 million more a year than we will get and it goes down with the next two. So on the next slide, we take all those numbers and roll them to the multi-year projection. And again, this is only the unrestricted numbers for the unrestricted fund. We have a 45-day budget revision, which was presented in September, and then our first interim in 1617 and 1718. And again, you can see the LCFF revenue. When we look at this slide under revenue, you can see the one-time funding, how it dropped in 1617 and 1718. Our contributions, as you know, are from the general fund and may get moved into the restricted account to support special education, maintenance and operations, and our supplemental In 1617 and 1718, currently, last year for maintenance and operations, we spent $1.5 million. And the state has made a commemoration that we can continue that into 1516, so it'll be the same amount we spent 1415. And then in 1617 and 1718, we are assuming 2% increase with the goal being up to 3% as the state is strongly recommending. Under total expenditures, there's the line item, the benefits do take into account all the pension increases. And then you see those transfers out. So starting this year in 1516, 1617, and 1718, we're projecting to reserve $1.7 million, which will be moved out of the general fund to fund 17. And this goes back to our contingency plan. So basically, it's 2% of the expenditures because we already require to reserve 3%. So this is the additional 2% adding to funding ongoing operations because as you're aware, in 2020, 21, once we reach that $78 million target, the only increases that they're projecting will be COLA increases. And as expenditures are rising with the pension and going up, our deficit spending is most likely increased, so we need to have reserves for our cash management and to accommodate that. So that's okay. Let's go back in. How does it go on? Subtotal for your surplus and your deficit. You can see 1516, there's a $3.6 million surplus, and then we start to deficit spend when we put that money into the reserve. But as you know, when we deficit spend, that comes out of our fund balances when we start the year with basically our cash balance. So when we go to the next screen, you can see your beginning balance is your $3.6 million for 1516, and then revenue plus expenditures are added together to get your projected ending fund balance. Of that ending fund balance, we always have pieces that are restricted. And on here, we have our 3% reserve. So then we have our unassigned fund balance. What I would like to bring to the attention of everybody, positively, with this projection, we meet our 3% reserve. But I think it's very important to realize that if we did not get that $5.1 million in one-time funding, we would have a deficit spending of $1.4 million and our unassigned fund balance would only be $3.2 million, which then you have the ripple effect going forward. So when you get to 1819 and further out, when your deficit spending grows, you're depleting your fund balance every year. So I just really want to make sure that everybody is aware of that and why we want to make sure we take those one-time monies in reserve. Any questions? So this is a victorial view, and this is our general fund revenue, and this is restricted and unrestricted total of all our revenue that we receive. We have our LCFF revenue, as we discussed earlier. And if you would like more detail on this, page 14 of your executive summary outlines each category and gives you a little bit more detail of what they are. But basically, our federal revenue is our restricted and unrestricted lottery, and that's, I'm sorry, I said that backwards, our restricted lottery, federal reserve, federal revenue, excuse me, is basically our title funds. That's the majority of that, our title funds, the no child left behind ones. Our other state revenue, that is where our one-time money sits and our restricted and unrestricted lottery. Our other local revenue, that is interest, income, donations, and our CELO that comes in to support our special education students. And then we have these transfers in of $245,000, and that's mainly money that comes in from child development for 4% of annual. So on our next slide, we have our total expenditures. Again, it's a combination of restricted and unrestricted, and I broke it out at the top so you can see that. As you can see, certificated classified employee benefits are almost 30% of the budget. And then another big number of services and other expenses in those are basically utilities, legal, anything for basic operating expenditures. And then we have the other ALCO, which are capital leases, excess costs that we pay to other districts for our regional services program, and then the transfer out for the reserve. Any questions? So our last slide, one of our last slides here, all the other funds. And I just quickly want to go through the other funds. We basically have the beginning balance that we started the year, our projected revenue for them, and projected expenditures, and what our ending balance is projected to be. The first fund again is the CELO pass-through fund, and none of the money, basically, is our money. It just comes to us as allocated to us from CELO. But since we are the AU unit, the money runs through our district, so you see that huge amount of revenue coming in and going back out. The child development program for Fund 12, as you know, is the state preschool program. And then we have for maintenance. Our Fund 17 is our reserve fund. Fund 21, that's our measured EEP money, and we put in there expecting to spend it all this year. Fund 25 is all our developer fees. And you can see right now, and I would like to, and I will talk about this further later, but right now, you see that we started the year at 8.7 million. And we were, I was talking about reserves and cash management, which is that come up. Currently, the balance in that capital facilities fund is down to right around $4 million. Because we have a depletion of cash flow, the way we receive the apportionments from the state, so in October, our cash flow drops. So we are able to transfer money from the developer fees to cover our cash flow shortages. So this happens in October, and it will again happen in February. And then as all the apportionments and all the money is paid out to the district in June, that $10 million or $5 million, however much is transferred, will be moved back to the developer fee account. And then Fund 40 is our lease revenue bond. And you can see we have that $15 million in expenditure because we did take down in September the Series B bond, which was principal of $14.8 million. Currently, we're projecting the balance to be $2.9 million. And with paying off the Series B, our annual principal and debt payments will be approximately $790,000. So just with that $2.9 million interest earning on it, we should, we will have enough money to pay the debt for at least the next four years until a plan is developed, which I know Dr. Lucid is working with bond council to come up with funding sources for the lease revenue bond. 49 are your CFDs, and they tie to Fund 52, which is where all of your debt payments are made out of, your revenue comes in and then your debt payments. Fund 51 is the fund that is managed by the state, where they collect our property tax or just collect various taxes, and then they pay the debt. And the last fund up here is Fund 63, which is the child development program. I do want to bring your attention to the note at the bottom, is it says they have a protected ending balance, ending balance of $7.4 million. But of that, right around $6 million are fixed assets, which are buildings and equipment. So, non of it. Any questions on that? All right. And if you want to read more about the other funds, on page 19 to 21 of the executive summary, it has the details. So in closing, as I'm sure you've seen this many times before, understanding our own fiscal solvency issues, to really understand deficit spending and how it affects us in the long term, to understand the purpose of reserves. Reserves are for cash management, are for volatility in future economic conditions. So it's very important that we have some type of reserves above and beyond the 3%. And just for more knowledge, the 3% is basically two weeks of payable. The recommendation really is 17%. Some of the, I'm sorry, the 17%, the rating agencies, Moody's, examples of those rating agencies that rate us for bond, they highly recommend 15% of your funds are reserved, your spenders are reserved. Average for mid-sized districts throughout 2020 is they're reserving 15%. So that's why. And again, it's cash flow management, and as I was speaking earlier of how we're transferring money in from the developer fees. Currently, we have a nice number in that developer fees. And we've added almost $1 million this year. But as construction slows down, and many of the developers are now using CFDs as opposed to developer fees, so that income is coming down, the revenue is coming down. And as we finish, as Maggie finishes working on the master plan, and we'll be using those funding sources for some of the projects. Yes?
You just said something. So it's not fiscally advantageous for us to be entering into all these CFDs that perhaps now if we're not going to be building schools for a bit, or INPRO is the only one, we should be looking to the developer fees as opposed to creating the CFDs?
I think that I can look into that more, but I think part of that is the choice by developers.
It's actually our choice, we vote to approve and accept it or not. And it should be an advantage to the districts. It certainly isn't an advantage to our homeowners at the moment. So I think it is, if you could look into that.
Yes, I definitely will. I'll look into it.
One thing is we're building a school in the neighborhood, but if now the developments were housing students within the school's community, we probably would want to look at that. That's just a thought.
Is Fund 25 the only fund that's available for these types of transfers?
It's the fund that we have used over the years, and it seems to have worked. It's always had available and have been used.
And, right. And if you, if we go back and we look at the other funds, none of, some of, like, none of the other funds have the dollar amount for duty, and most of them we can't borrow from. So that's where we go. So as we build up our reserve funds, and we have that Fund 17, we'll be able to transfer from Fund 17 to the reserve.
We have years where the board has had to authorize a transit, but have very long time that we've had, we've had to use the trans. So in that having those dollars in our funds to support the potential transfers is advantageous to us.
Remind me, is five of those developer fees or CFDs?
CFDs, CFDs, and it's a JCFA unit, it's a part.
And then, as was discussed earlier, in January, we'll see the governor's budget proposal. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for, thank you.
There you go. She's worked very, very hard on this. You can breathe.
I actually, I actually do have three questions I'd like to get noted in the record, if you would please. But I'm trying to coordinate my notes on three, on two different pieces of paper here. The first one that I wanted to make sure we find out was, or just publicly include in the record, if you would. Our bargaining team did ask last time we met, maybe it was the second time before, regarding analysis of step in column, there were some inconsistencies that we believe existed, and we had asked that those come back to us. They have yet to materialize, and we had hoped to see those before these numbers were made public here. So we are publicly asking for those again, step in column analysis. I know our team isn't going back until February.
Actually, your concern was shared with us. We bent back and checked on that, and we were told we did have to file by December 15th, so we did have to do.
Completely understand that. My concern is that when you make a presentation that's a public document like this, there are some serious concerns we have with a public document and numbers that are, we continue to draw on the statement, we are deficit spending, deficit spending, and those statements are very, they create a serious gash in that trust mesh that we're trying to establish. Let's put it that way. We've now taken our pair of scissors and started to cut into this mesh that we are attempting to build for trust when we make public statements with deficit spending on multiple, multiple times in the evening. So step in column clarification, because we believe that there's some inaccuracies. We also believe that there's something that needs to be addressed with the flat enrollment. The way the chart was laid out, it doesn't address any growth in there, or maybe there's declining, and we, I know, sitting on multiple committees in the district, this is a word that's come up on multiple occasions, and nobody seems to be changing those numbers. I don't know what's going on with that. And the last thing I'd like to publicly get in the record, and maybe you, the presentation kind of addressed it a little bit, but it didn't sound like it was clear, was what was going on with the Series A bond. Are we going to be able to use the CFD to pay that off? Or was that a flat out, no, that's not an option? The statement went something like, four years to pay down our debt, but the sentence prior to that was something about the bond and CFDs. So I'd like to get clarification on that, if it's possible.
Talking about the lease revenue bond?
The lease revenue bond. So at this time, we have enough money sitting in the account to pay four years of debt and principal, and there are other other type of funding options that is still being discussed with Dr. Lucid and a bond council.
Okay. Okay, so your words are, we do have the money, but we have not ruled out the opportunity to use the CFDs. Is that correct?
If that's what Dr.
Well, we have not ruled it out, that it's illegal to do it. Legal council has not said you may not. Legal counsel has not said you may not legally do that. So at this point, we do not have the answer that says, legal counsel says, no, you may not use CFD to pay that down.
At this point, we're.
That's all, that's all I'm trying to find out, exactly. Because it is an option, and we've been going down that road for a long time. And then all of a sudden, this presentation comes up and says, we're billing, we're back billing for reserves because we've got to pay these things off. So we just kind of went down a curve here, and that trust became another issue. So I'm trying to understand how that changed, because I've been to a lot of meetings, and now, this is the first time I heard that. So I'm trying to figure out where that's coming from. Thank you.
Did you, did you write them all out?
Oh, yeah. I have my questions off, but she doesn't need my questions. You see my name?
Can't you read them?
No, can't. But I said the public ones.
I know, but if we can get them, then we can.
Sure, sure. I'll send an email for them. Absolutely.
If you have any questions.
Thank you, Roseanne.
No, you're not quite yet. Boy, you got lucky. I think we'll be having quite a study session after our CDO turns in too, just so we can bring all of this together, as we've done before. And he does a little bit, and how we both get legal and stuff. You send them to Pam. She can send them on to us too, that way we can all get a look at them. One of the things we've found, if we need clarification on things with the communication, that's going to be part of it. What we're going to be working on. Thank you. Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Powell, and a second by Mr. Trunkie. Hearing no other questions, and thanking you for the report. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes with a five to zero vote.
Is that one of the questions? Other than the city of San Borita that has a seventeen percent savings account, not three percent, but seventeen, are there any school districts in this valley that have those numbers?
Not this valley.
Not that I know of.
I don't think COC has that actually. On intuition based.
Not that we're aware of. So if we find out, we'll let you know.
On to quickening expansion. I am A is to approve California assessment of student performance and progress, otherwise known as CAP. For the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year round election, please. Move back Mr. Daniel Serbit. Second to Dr. Powell.
Good evening. It's really my pleasure to present to you for the first time the report of how we perform on the state assessment, calling numbers to cast. And to understand these scores, because it's a new kind of report that we've never had before, I want to give you a little background as a context for looking at the scores and understanding how they did in with the state assessment system. One thing that's important to notice is that it actually now is a system. Prior, we had standards and we had tasks, and it was do your work all year, get measured by it, and it's heavy on accountability. But the process that the state is using now is looking from left to right, first with the green boxes. The first one is that with the standards that we have now, our goal is to have every student college or career ready. And as we move through all the school years and the access, we want to see every student at that standard readiness for college or for the career that they choice, that they choose. What's different, however, is the big triangle in the middle. In the past, it's been teachers teach, kids take tests. Teachers teach, kids take tests. And the emphasis that the state has right now is how do we make sure that the information that teachers have about how their students are progressing comes frequently enough that they can make changes in instruction throughout the year in order to make sure that kids are making progress. So instead of it just being an accountability system, the whole purpose of testing and the focus of testing is can I get the information on how my students are performing now so I can make changes right away for the students that aren't showing mastery next at this point? So they've provided two things at the bottom in the blue boxes there. The first one is the digital library. And this is a set of lessons, of training, of formative assessments that teachers can use, K through twelve, available to the state, from the state, no cost to us. And each of our teachers have a code to get in, and it has been painful to try to get in. The state changed the system in October, and we had to reset everybody's numbers again. The emails that came out were not clear. However, we do have some training set up in January to look at their features and get access to that. The second box on the right-hand side is interim assessments. We have, in the state of California, had benchmarks sometimes twice, three times a year in order for us to take a look at how our students are doing. But the focus has always been who's taught mastery, not who's taught mastery and what are my next steps? And the interim assessments that were provided now for third through sixth grade are online, and they mimic the test that the students take at the end of the year, computers. And they are the same format and using the same tools that children use. So not only does it give us information on how the students are progressing at the level of rigor that's required for the end of the year test, it gives us the opportunity to train the kids on the technology that they use for the test. The better they understand that, the more the test that they take is an accurate measure of what they know and on how do they access technology. And the summative test that we do once a year, they're asking us to look at that as just a measure of mastery at this point, but not to be used for classification, not to do an individual student analysis, but rather to look at it as an analysis of your program, and where is your program being successful at the district level? So summary would be, in the past, we had assessment for accountability once a year. And now the state is asking us to move into a different way of looking at the whole assessment question and saying that we need to have it be embedded into the instructional cycle so that we're constantly taking a look at what do the kids know now, what do I need to do next? So that plan on next. Another way of phrasing it is, what do my students know now and what do they not know yet? And that very important word, yet, assuming that we are agents of change in our students' lives. If you take a look at what they consider the ideal use of assessments throughout the year, it would be taking a look at the student needing to learn the standards. The theme is always based on the standards that guide what students should be able to know or be able to do. And in our classroom, we have formative assessment. Formative assessment is the word that talks about how do I get information on how my students are doing so that I can decide what I do next? And in all of the lessons that our teachers teach, they're doing formative assessment all the time. When they're calling on students, they're actually taking a look at where are you right now so that I know what to teach next, and how to shape my lesson in the process of it. So they're suggesting that there should be assessments throughout the year that give that opportunity to keep tweaking what you're doing as a teacher. In the past, we've done assessments so that we have a grade per grade book. And the state is saying, do those assessments so that you know what to do next with students, as opposed to so you have a grade to go in a grade book. So if we take a look on how we did, we just really need to congratulate our teachers for how they have embraced all of the changes and the difficult changes that have been made and started making the transition to not only a new content area, but also a new way of assessing that and teaching that. And these are, this is a look at how our students performed at each of the grade levels compared with the state of California. And this is our language arts scores. And you can see we're well above where the state of California at is in language arts at each of the grade levels. Our next score is broken down in the new way of looking at it from the state in terms of claims. In the past, we'd get a report on students, and it would go standard for groups of students, standard by standard, how they did. And the state is showing that reporting system because each of the claims are based on the idea of being college and career ready. So the areas that we get information back about our program are large areas of reading. So this is looking at how do they do not only in reading literature, but informational text. The next one is writing, and that's writing in any genre. It's also writing for short purposes, excuse me, or writing a longer essay. So whatever the variety of writing is that they were asked to do, that's the writing score. The next one is new. We've never had a state test that tested how well our children listen. There's a lot of parents that might disagree with that, but we do have some hard evidence that our students are very capable of listening and being able to make meaning and use the information that they're hearing orally. And then finally, the area of research and inquiry. And this is the process of being able to read something and know what resources do we need to add to it or what information we have and how you use that responsibly. In these particular domains, the state is looking at cyclometrically. If you don't have enough test items in any one area, you can't break it down into the four categories that you have at the exceeding the standard, not the standard, almost not the standard, below standard. And so what they've done is given us the areas of either you completely exceeded it or you completely missed it, or you're in that middle of the curve that says you were at or under the standard. And that's in every area when you're looking cyclometrically, how you would measure student performance. Next thing to take a look at is how do our English learners, our students do? And this is the measure, Title III AMAOs is that measure. And this is telling us that if you look at the first one, it's just how many of our students, what percentage of our students are making progress in learning English. And the yearly target set by the state for fourteen fifty was that sixty point five percent of our students needed to make progress, and we exceeded that at sixty nine point four percent. The new targets from fifteen sixteen should come out later this week. So we met our first AMAO target. Our second AMAO target is looking at our students who have been here for less than five years. And the state is saying at least twenty four point two percent of our students should meet that target. And again, we've exceeded that target of forty point eight percent. The next target we take a look at is our students who have been here for more than five years and the progress that they've made. And we're looking at fifty point nine percent of those students being proficient in speaking English, and we are at sixty seven point four percent. So in all of the measures that we use with our students who are second language learners, they're all exceeding the expectations of the state as for the progress that they make in language. Next, we'll take a look at how we're doing in math. And in math, if we take a comparison of where we are with the state, you'll notice again, we've exceeded the state averages in all of our, in each of our grade levels.
Is that fifty percent being average?
The, there, you can't say fifty percent is average. This is just the total who exceeded, who were proficient or in the new terminology would be they met or exceeded the state standard. So these are kiddos who are right on track to be successful in terms of how this test measures things that is compared with what the state number is right now. It's the same number, pretending to students that we have exceeded, met or exceeded the standard. And then again, the math is broken down into planning areas as well. And these are closely correlated to what's called the eight mathematical practices. And so if you're taking a look at the areas of concepts and procedures, problem solving and modeling, and communicating their reasoning, what this tells us is that our students are very capable in not only choosing the answer, but being able to explain why their answer is correct and the evidence behind their answer. So the trend that we see in both our language arts and our math is the trend that when it comes to being able to process language, either on a list or being able to speak, our students are doing very, very well. But those are our standout areas of success on the very first time that we roll up the test scores. One of our responsibilities has always been take a look and see, do we have an achievement gap? And an achievement gap is anywhere where children of one group are not performing as well as children in another group. And the areas that we're asked to take a look at is ethnicity, disability, low income and language. The state is also going to be asking us to take a look at our foster youth and see what their levels of performance are, but they have not aggregated the scores by that category yet. So we're taking a look, first of all, do we have any discrepancies in gender? And we actually have our females outperforming our males in the areas of language arts. And we have a small discrepancy between our females and our males in the area of math. In ethnicity, and these again are all district scores, we have some achievement gaps with our black population and our Hispanic population. In our disability categories, if you look at students who have no disabilities, about sixty five percent of them were met or exceeded the standard. Those with disabilities, only twenty four percent. So we have quite a large gap there in language arts and in math. Excuse me?
A question on the high ones, please. So they're mild to moderate, not modest, if they are correct? And are they given tiny accommodations and such? That with all the accommodations in place?
Yes.
You still have that, actually?
Yes. And so two ways to look at that information. Because this is a random test, we don't know how large the gap should be, but that's a pretty large gap. The second thing is, it does show that we have students who have IEPs for a reason. They have IEPs because they haven't shown they're successful. So in one way, it's validating that we have the correct population who have IEPs. On the other hand, we need to be looking at this data to inform how we provide intervention. And so when we're looking at our LCAP, and we're talking about what services do we need to make sure all of our students have the opportunity to be school, college and career ready, we do need to talk to each of these groups about what interventions are we providing for them? And so that's a conversation with us as the administrators, with us as an LCAP committee. What should we be doing to make that gap look less?
Over the weekend, when we were talking about LCAP and such, and part of the discussion was about the benchmarks, and we were asking you questions on that. The questions for the benchmarks and such, those are dictated by the LCAP?
Correct. One of the eight areas that we have to be responsive to in the LCAP is how our students perform on the state made assessment. When we take a look at economic disadvantage, we have a very large economic gap there as well. So students who have no economic disadvantage and students who receive a speech monitor, how do you measure that? When we're taking a look at our students who are second language learners, English only students, and then our EL students, we have a huge gap there. Again, part of that is attributed to the fact that they are designated as English language learners because they haven't demonstrated mastery yet. So we would not expect it to be miserable if they didn't have any language deficits. Something significant that I wanted to point out to you though is a child is classified as, we classified English proficient after they came into us not being proficient in English language because they were children who were learning English as a second language. And I want you to notice that once they've been through our program, they exceed the performance of those language arts and math of our students who are English only, who speak no second language. And I wanted to talk about that and how significant that is for two reasons. The one is that about ten years ago, we began a program of very systematically training teachers to use our English language development program, where they have designated time every day using structured English language development with those students and teaching them all about the English language and how to use it and giving them opportunities to do that every single day. It's a very systematic and targeted program. It has been very successful. So successful that it help paces our students to come in speaking English as their native language. Many of our, and I mean to say that this trend is constant at every single school site except one. So our English language development program, that is a difficult thing to add into the schedule every day, there is true. We have several schools that have instituted an English only time as well to focus on language when they're, excuse me, English language learners are having their program time. And one of the things that we need to take a look at based on this is should the program that we're providing our second language students be a similar program to what we're providing second language students? If it's that successful? If it's that successful in developing language, should all of our students have access to it? So this is good information for us to have as we're looking for.
But then what would accounts for the math piece of it?
Because math is very much language-based, and especially in the area of Common Core, everything is about how do you justify, excuse me, and how do you explain your thinking? And so language is very much connected to thinking, and the more articulate you are in language, the better you are performing at your thoughts, and there's a big connection using that. And math, math ages much more into the computation. So language, you talk to teachers, oftentimes they'll say, he doesn't do well in reading, and that's a big hint of the family that's too good in math, and it's very much like this is a part of that. All right. Next day, next area we want to take a look at is science. And again, science is only for fifth-grade teachers to administer to their fifth-grade students, but it does cover fourth and fifth-grade concepts. So it is a responsibility also for our fourth-grade teachers to be a part of training our students for fifth-grade science. On the left-hand side, you see this is how all of our students performed. We took the CST. On the right-hand side is the California Modified Assessment, and that, we only had 74 students take that. That's a whole builder from our old start times where if students need significant accommodations and they had accommodations throughout the year, they could be designated to take the alternative exam. So that's why we have two separate sets of scores, but you can see in the area of science, our schools, our students are performing very well, and that's the state scores on the side. CAPPa was the fifth-grade test that our students in SEC do. And as you can see, we only had 13 students, so it's hard to place a certain amount of significance on that score. It's a very low sample group, but I did want you to be aware of that score, too. Physical fitness, we are testing our fifth graders in six different areas, and at the bottom, you can see what the state scores are compared with what our scores are. The test that the parents have, sorry, the students and the teachers dislike the most is body composition, and that's the height and weight measurement. But you can see over the years, we're showing a significant trend in students' physical health as measured by their body composition. One area that we have, or two areas that we have shown a decreased trend is the trunk extension, and that is an exercise where students lay flat with their hands at the side, and can they lift their head? And we measure flexibility throughout the back, to the back, if they lift their head and up, eight or nine inches. So that's one area that we are not doing well in currently. And the other is upper body strength, and then that's the push-ups.
Is the physical fitness given at multiple times during the year, or is it just once?
Uh, one time a year. And the window opens in February, maybe as late as May. I have this slide in here because I think it's important to discuss the challenges that our teachers had and continue to have around the new Common Core standards and new assessment for two reasons. The one is I want you to realize the magnitude of change that teachers are being asked to deal with, and the second one is how fabulous the scores are in light of all of the changes that our teachers have been going through. So I'd like to start over on the right-hand corner and talk about content. Anything that's listed in blue is a significant change from two years ago, what was accepted. So when you're taking a look at ELA and ELD, this is the first time speaking and listening or speech and language has been tested as a part of state testing. This is the first time we've had standards in speaking and listening that are as engaged or as fully exploded as what they are under Common Core. There's a brand emphasis in informational texts that was not there previously. Accurriculum, the state approved it just last month. We do not have an adopted curriculum in language arts that matches Common Core. Now that the state has given us approval of this, we're looking to identify sources of financing to be able to pilot and then adopt the language arts text that our teachers could be using with their students. In math, huge shift in looking at mathematical practices, thinking like a mathematician in everything you do previously, what was required of students is made to compute. And if you could look at four answers that were given and choose one based on some reasoning, you could be a very good mathematician. And now the amount of reasoning that's involved is a significant change for us, and we did adopt our curriculum in April of 2015. A big change that's on the horizon that we need to address next year, and we have a group meeting this year to discuss how we should go about rolling it out next year, is the next generation science standards. This will be a significant change. The emphasis is going to be on doing a lot of hands-on experiments that children do, and a lot of exploring science and not reading it out from a text, but the rich discussions about what you think will happen and why, and we need to have the image along with that. And this is a brand new area for us. We do not have any training in that, so it's going to be a lot of starting from scratch with science. Another thing that the next generation science standards do is called the cross-cutting standards, and it's looking at different parts of science across all the areas. So for example, if you were looking at earth science, you, I'm not sure where that's coming from, does that mean?
Is the microphone there still on?
Here we go. If you're looking at earth science, talking about volcanoes, and you're looking at photosynthesis, and you're looking at how the body cells work, you might be looking at a cross-cutting concept of energy, because that's something that all of them have in common. So you might be teaching energy, but looking at energy through volcanoes, or energy through cells, or energy through photosynthesis. So it's a different way of organizing even how you think about science. So it's going to be a huge shift for us next year. And then again, it begins in September of 2017, so we will be launching into the new way of teaching without the necessary curriculum. When we're talking about pedagogy, in the past, we look at what do students need to be able to do, what skills do they need to know, and we also look at could they understand the concept. But what we've gone further in the Common Core is the application area, and that's brand new. And it's not only just one standard at a time, but how do you have four, or five, or six, or seven standards that you're looking at all at the same time? So that the level of rigor and complexity is brand new for us. We take a look at assessment. In the past, assessment was just, this is a grade, and we move on. But what the state is saying is, we need to take a look at assessment and saying, if this is where you are right now, what is your next step as a student? And as a teacher, what is my next step because they're not there yet? In terms of the assessments that we're doing for the state, they're computer-based, they're tied to cluster standards. We no longer get reports that say, in this particular standard, you did do well. We just get a cluster report of what standards they have, and that's brand new. One of the things that the state is telling us to do is to think of the assessments that we are giving, or the assessments that we're getting back from the state, as a flashlight and not a camera. In the past, getting the scores was all about, what is your API? And you were either really good or really bad, and the camera came down on you if you were really bad. But the state is saying, the purpose of the assessment is not to be a manner, it's to be a flashlight. And the flashlight is where do we go next, on the path, learning our path, is where we go next? So if we're looking at all of the things that have changed in content, all of the things that have changed in pedagogy, some of the forms that we've used and some of the processes that we've used for many years have to change because what we're doing is different. So one of the changes that we've made already is changing our goal-setting form, so it reflects the standards and all the previous standards. Something we need to be looking at is the standards-based report card. Right now, there's a disconnect between the reports that parents get about how their child is performing in class and what we're actually measuring with the standards. And for a system to be efficient and coherent, the report that we're giving to parents should match what we're teaching, and we're not matching at all. To get a standards-based report card is a two-years process. It's a lot of discussion about which standards are most important. And if you've decided that this is the most important standard, what do we do next if your child is not showing mastery in that standard? As opposed to grade book that says, you got an A, you got a B, you got a C, and they're all moving on. So the transition to a standards-based report card is not something that can be done quickly or lightly. The benchmarks that we used three years ago, we're trying to go over and form the standards. They're not applicable to what teachers are teaching now, so we've had to go in and rewrite our benchmarks. And then how we use our benchmarks needs to change. In the past, the benchmark said, we've learned all this that I taught this for you, or we didn't learn this, and we've got to move on. And what the format of assessments or the use of benchmarks is, is, okay, this is where your children are now, what's your plan back in to those assessments? So these are all changes that we've had, and I just wanted to emphasize that these changes have been painful because the three areas that teachers spend all their time doing, looking at the content, looking at pedagogy, looking at how I assess what they're doing, every single part of those have had major changes. Just wanted you to be aware of that and see how our kids perform in their first time on the test. Any questions?
Probably just one statement this weekend when we're also there. Was it Monrovia School District that is using Monrovia Canyon to start their?
Next generation.
Next generation science standard? They did not wait to get everything, and we found it useful because we have lots of root canyon up here. So Dr. Hamlin and I were chatting about that afterwards, that we have some of the resources here in Santa Clarita that they have so that we can start looking at some of those. That was a little bit helpful.
Thank you.
Dr. Powell was just talking about, take a look at strategies from here and using them in the other areas.
And I think that's one of the things is, that was a very pleasant surprise in taking a look.
Wonderful validation.
State of course.
Absolutely.
Sign them up.
Okay, I have a motion by, it looks like Mr. David Sirda and a second by Dr. Powell, to approve the assessment form.
Right.
All opposed, motion passes with a five to zero vote. Onto IUD, which is approved, a homeless education grant from Los Angeles County Office of Education. Move by Mrs. Kishelmi.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Trunkie.
I am delighted to introduce Lauren Frye. If she would stand up, please. Lauren Frye is our parent liaison to our foster youth and homeless youth. She, her position was created by LCAP, knowing that we had no outreach to foster parents, and we didn't even know where to begin. And she's lived around and running, and has made some wonderful connections with our foster families. And in addition, she saw an opportunity to apply for a grant for $3,000. She voted for the grant, and it was awarded. So I wanted you to get a chance to meet someone who took some initiative and has brought in some much needed funds for working with our homeless students. Did you want to add something, Lauren?
Um, I think just like we talked, Nina and I talked about what we want to specifically use the money for. We had to submit our budget last Friday, so we're deciding to be part of it for our school programs, and we're collaborating with the Boys and Girls Club. We're going to be meeting with Gina, the principal of our real estate, next week, to collaborate with local students. We have our highest number of homeless students over in real estate. And we're also going to be using money for a parent education workshop, and then also to do a professional development for our foster students.
Thank you for taking the time to do that, too. Any questions? Erinna, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes with a five to zero vote. Onto IUD, for its site's single plan, school plans for student achievements.
So.
And by a second, please, by Mr. David Sirda.
Yes.
Right, Dr. Hamlin.
In a new world of LCAP, you'll notice that the single plans, they're the goal should the district has in the LCAP, but they're uniquely tuned, have their actions to what each site needs and how they're spending money to reach those goals. And as we start the new LCAP season, we will take a look at each of the actions at each of the sites and see which of them need to be reflected in the district LCAP. So it's an important process of LCAP influences the sites, and the sites influence the LCAP. So it's a ongoing, year-long discussion as opposed to a once-a-year period that's only put on the shelf.
Thank you for all the hard work that you put into that. We look forward to reading them all. All right, now I have a motion, second, says state to approve. I wish you could say to accept that, because that may be honest. But look forward to reading them over the next couple of weeks. We can read questions back to you, Dr. Hamlin.
Absolutely, anytime. And as I said, it's intended to be a document that changes throughout the year based on the needs and what's working and what's not, and any questions, always welcome.
Thank you so much. Erinna, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed with a five to zero vote. Onto IUD. That's why you gentlemen are here. Approve the purchase of new phone system contract with SigmaNet. Five is contract 15 dash 16 dash zero forty-six. And a motion, please.
So.
Move by Mr. Trunkie. By Dr. Powell. Dr. Hamlin.
I'd love to refer to, try to explain the process we use and the choices we make in those open years.
So just a little background, almost, well, it was a year ago, last Christmas, the weekend after, where our current 3com phone system died. We were able to resurrect it by calling around. Nobody in Southern California. I had some contacts in St. Louis, Missouri, that actually were still servicing these phone systems, and they were able to resurrect our phone system, and we were not having to replace our phone system last year on an emergency basis. So we were able to go through the RFP process. We posted an RFP out for bid for two weeks. We had a bidders conference halfway through where we invited the prospective biddies to come in and ask me questions about the process or about the system. We had six responders that actually submitted proposals to us. We then had invited all six to come back to give us a 20-minute demonstration, presentation on their system. And then we also, we had three hours to do six, so we did a half hour each. We had 10-minute kind of question and answer, or break time to switch folks. Then we came up, we met as a committee. The committee members were Keith Carzen, Chris Hamlin, Barbara Tapia, Kathleen Pertisat, Debbie Roca was on there for the start, Dodi Maggio, Vicky Escalante, and myself, just to have a, what?
Rocha.
Rocha. What did I say? Rocha?
And I would be very wealthy and not be sitting here.
No, you know, like a candy, almond.
Yeah.
Okay. So we met, and the committee watched the presentations and demonstrations. We met together again and came up with choosing the Cisco product that SigmaNet offered. We had offering, two short tail offerings, one from KTS, the other one from CalNet. We had Jive, which is a completely web-based product that's a pay-by-month. We had DTC, which is actually around the corner from us, which is an We had DTC, which is actually around the corner from us, which is an NEC product. But we decided to go on the SigmaNet, the Cisco product, based on the cost and that it would meet our needs and it's a state-of-the-art system. So we're doing like the best of both worlds. We don't have to settle. So that's.
I have one question for you.
Yes.
If I call into the district office now and I call an extension and I get their voicemail, will it take me back to the main menu or do I have to hang up and call back again?
In the new system?
Yes.
Or right now?
Right now, it's horrible. New system.
So the new system, no, you would give the, you would be given the option to like go back to the tree without having to call back again.
Great. That would be a huge improvement. That's a good question. Yeah, and it doesn't disconnect with the middle conversation.
And it's fully supported and under warranty.
What's the warranty on it?
Right, five years.
Five years?
Yes. But that's extended. I mean, you, it's ongoing. If we had, if we had a Cisco system now, we would not be having this discussion as far, even though it may be four or five years old, it, we would just keep going on.
So all the licenses are for five years that are included in the package?
That's the smart net. Smart net's a little bit different with the Cisco phones than it is with the Meraki licensing. So the Meraki licensing was a five-year. The smart net is more of your warranty and support. So that's, they're not.
At the end of five years?
If we turn off.
What are you going to end up renewing? You're going to have to renew the licenses? You're going to have to pick up a?
Not the licenses, just the support. And works out. Let me just check my map, but it's not. Okay, you know, it's like $10,000 a year, is that about right?
I don't know the dollar, so I'm going to, the common system, I've done Dr. Lewis and Dr. Powell a lot. It's, the smart net basically works to discount the first time of licensing. So every five years you renew, sorry, every five years we do renew what we call the smart licensing or the voice system. So it keeps the maintenance going, keeps the upgrades going year after year. You'll never need to out of support solution in this scenario. But every five years, it's a piece of the license that gets renewed, if that makes sense. And there's a certain lineup, I could direct you guys to if you guys wanted to direct line amps. I could show you that on materials, it's all, it's on there.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this a, they include like a yearly assessment of how your system is working? Or just if it falls apart, then, then we bought it?
No, it comes with all the upgrades and all the updates and the maintenance, all that.
Like a routine thing where once a year, you come out and look at everything?
Yes.
Yes.
What do you think the useful life is of the system?
I could, I could, I could address that. So I've been, I've been working for Cisco for 10 years. I've actually supported public sector in California, mostly Los Angeles and Ventura. The state's a great example, the state's had the same phone system since 2007 when we sold it to them. Same phone, same system running since then. The system's been around since 1999, so it depends on how long you want to keep it. It's just as long as you keep the licensing upgraded, you keep upgrading the system, it'll last you, it's a server-based system forever. Then you might enter place over time as the phone. But the system itself will last as long as you guys want to continue having support. Locally, the Wayman's Art District uses it in some locations as well. So there's a lot of references locally that we can direct you to as well.
And then one last question for me. Will the installation of the system have any impact on the phone service itself in terms of the provider and will it lead to any potential cost savings?
It will, it may impact as, to add some more redundancy into our environment that we already have, we may add additional lines at the sites as we have added internet lines at the sites for the, for the internet connectivity. But those are, it's a nominal, like $50 a month kind of, kind of fee and we'll go to the board and adjust the contract if, if we need necessary doing that. But right now, we're not planning on, on doing that out of the box.
Who's the phone service provider?
Time Warner Cable.
So it's all wrapped up into one contract?
Yes.
With the internet?
Yep. Damn! It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
So given the goal would be for sign-off January 30th? January 30th is the roll date for complete sign-off by, by the district or?
I plan on, I mean, if, if you all say yes tonight, the current plan is to have it installed by January 8th.
Installation 8th?
So I really don't have Christmas plans. I didn't have fall break plans, Christmas plans, maybe on spring break. And the reason is, is these types of things are best done when the students aren't there, obviously. So having these windows of time, fall break, winter break, where we can get into the schools and not impact the educational environment, tear things apart, put it back together, turn over a new system to the school working and that's, that's the goal.
What are the milestones, the key milestones to be able to make that day?
So we've got, of course, have it equipped in place. And they've already been checking it out many times while we were sitting here, so we're close on some things. Some things we're, we're fine on. We've got 30 days, basically, to install the phone system from now until January 8th. So key milestones would be equipment delivery. We're going to keep the structure the same as far as extensions and trees and things like that. So that part is good because we, we're just, there's nothing wrong with those things. So everybody will keep their extension and that. So we can just move that kind of, we won't have that kind of design or thought process that we'll have to worry about.
In terms of programming, right, what it was?
Yeah, but it's, it's really just a copying of the programming instead of recreating the programming kind of thing. So, but that's really, that's something we can start ahead of time before the students leave. So that when, by the time the students leave, we're ready to come in, install hardware and, and go.
So the training will start the week of January 11th?
We will start training the office staff on the new system.
Right. The 11th should be 18th?
Before, I'd like to get them in before we actually install the system. So I think the plan was mid-December is what we had said. So.